Call the town council meeting for April 24th in session.
Recording in progress, Flood Report.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Our heavenly Father, once again we come before you this evening, please thank you so much for all the many blessings you've bestowed on this little town and on the individuals that work here and the individuals that are here tonight. Just be with us throughout this meeting, lead and guide us the way that please ye rest in saying Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham? Pamela Samples?
Here.
Lance Walker?
Here.
Approval minutes for the regular meeting, April 10th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Lance Walker?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable, vouchers, and payroll.
So moved.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Lance Walker?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, seeing no resolutions, ordinance is on first reading. Is that you, Mike?
Yes, we are presenting an ordinance. It's a first reading, there'll be no vote tonight on a water rate increase. Mitchell from Baker Tilly's here to present some of the highlights of it, so if you have any questions, after he gives his presentation, we can go from there, kind of read out anything anybody has a question about prior to voting.
Let's open it.
Thank you, again. Again, Mitchell Eschweiler with Baker Tilly. We were requested, along with Doug Volvasari, to prepare a water rate study to look at where does your water utility currently stand for its rates and charges? What are some of the things that need to be addressed and to see if we would need to do some sort of rate increase for the utility? A little background, we filed with IURC back in 2015 for a rate increase. That's the last time that the rates for the water utility were adjusted. So it's been about eight years since the water utility rates have been formally adjusted through an IURC proceeding, which is what we would do here today if you were to go and approve a rate increase. You should have a copy of the report in front view. I'm going to start on page two. And as I go through this presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Happy to do that as we go. Page two is just looking historically, at the top, your cash and investment balances. You can see there, over the past three years, cash balances have been relatively stable, but we do see from 2020 to 2022, they start to come down. Moving to the second section there, your revenues and expenses. This is really what's driving that decrease in cash that we saw from '21 to '22. You can see here, your operating expenses are starting to grow and they're beginning to outpace your revenues. Some of the larger items we'll talk about later, payroll increases, purchased water from Bloomington, and we've also seen higher costs for materials and supplies, really driven by what we're seeing nationwide with inflation levels. One thing I just wanted to focus on at the bottom there is your historical coverage, also known as bond coverage. You can see there, in 2020, it was 157%. And due to those rising expenses, we've seen that coverage come down to 44% for 2022. When you go and issue debt like you did back in '16, you're committing to have bond coverage of 125%. So as you can see for '22, because of those higher expenses, the coverage there for the bonds fell below the 125% mark in your bond ordinance. I'm going to move to page four. And real briefly, just touching on this, this is a graph that communities really like to see, your consumers do, really just looking at where they are compared to surrounding communities. This is looking at a usage of 4,000 gallons. This is typically about an average residential user. You can see here, Elletsville's current rate, average users paying $24.44. And we'll talk about some of the drivers of the increase, but after the proposed increase, you'd be looking at an average bill of $32.62. And you can just see some of the surrounding communities close to Elletsville. You are on the lower end currently, and this is going to put you right about in the middle of the pack. And just for reference, a lot of these communities, we do work with and know that they are also in the process of looking at rates. So it's not something uncommon at this time, especially with what we're seeing with the cost of labor and materials. Moving to page five. So one of the drivers of the increase in rates, what you'll see is the capital improvement plan. So if you look at the top there, in lines, just below line 17, on annual replacements and improvements, we're proposing to have approximately 291,000 in your rates and charges to pay for some of these capital improvements. You can see the list there, items 1 through 16, including a new maintenance facility there in line 15 for four and a half million dollars. What we're looking to do here for the maintenance facility is that water and sewer would cover 50% of that facility. The water utility would not issue the debt. We're currently proposing that the sewer would do that, and then water would reimburse the sewer for its portion of the debt service. In addition to that, we're also looking at meter replacements over the next 15 years. You can see that under note two. And then under note three, we are proposing an additional utility employee that's going to be split 50-50 between water and sewer. And that can be seen under note three. And just for reference, last time we filed with IURC for your replacements and improvements, they had approved $163,000 annually. So this would be an increase of about $140,000 for your capital improvement plan. Turning to page six. The other item that we look at that your water utility has to support is the day-to-day operations. So those are items like your purchased water, salaries, wages, benefits, materials, contractual services. In the first column, our test year period was calendar year 2022. Total operation and maintenance expenses were $2,164,000. And we look at your books and records, and we go in and we make adjustments for what do we think is going to be in '23, '24 going forward, including pulling items out that may be nonrecurring or something that was a one-time expense. So overall, after making adjustments for those various items, and those are broken down on the next several pages, we have increased expenses by approximately $22,000. So our pro forma, or what we would estimate you'd see expenses for the next year or so, would be $2,186,000. Starting on page seven, I'm not going to go in too much detail. There's several adjustments that we made to the expenses. I'm just going to highlight here some of the main ones that we did do. So adjustment one, salaries and wages. There were increases for employees for the water utility, so we factored that into the salaries and wages adjustment. You can see here that increases salaries and wages by approximately $57,000. Anytime we have increases for payroll, we're going to see FICA and PERF increasing. So FICA, an increase of about $6,000, and then PERF, an increase of just under $11,000. We factored current health insurance premiums that would increase expenses by $12,600. Page eight. An increase of approximately $5,000 for the management contract. Adjustment six, if you recall, last year you had adjusted rates down for the elimination of the utility receipts tax. In 2022, utility receipts tax were only paid in quarter three and four. So moving forward, you're going to see a reduction of $15,800 for those utility receipts tax from 2022. And then in adjustment seven, we take out items that we see as capital or nonrecurring. You can see a couple of materials and supplies, and then contractual services for some of those URT reductions, and then some 30-day filings that you normally don't do on a typical year. Eight, we have an allowance for periodic maintenance. You currently have a tank maintenance contract that has an annual increase. Accounting for that increase, we've adjusted expenses up $1,655. And then we also have an allowance for booster pump maintenance, both your large and small booster pumps. After backing out items spent in the test year, that increases the expense by $2,039. And then adjustment nine, so proposing two employees. If you recall, one employee was going to be capitalized and run through the capital improvement plan. The second employee would run through your expenses, and again, 50-50, water and sewer. And then adjustment 10, including the rate case costs for filing with IURC, and that is amortized over an eight-year period. What we look at there is when was the last time rates were adjusted, so that's been eight years. So annually, that'd be about $12,000, including your expenses. And then materials and supplies, we backed out items that are related to customer taps for residential and commercial, taking out about $86,000 from materials and supplies. And just background on adjustment 11, we back these out because your tap fees are supposed to recover these, and these won't go through your rates and charges for your customers. So you do get tap fees, and those are covering these costs, it's just really moving them around in your accounting system. Any questions on the expense adjustments? If not, on page 11, we do factor in a normalization for your revenues, and this is really driven by increases in your customer counts as people connect to your system. So we did see residential, commercial, and apartment adjustments here on page 11 to account for those additional customers. At the very bottom, I'll just show the different increases. For your test year, metered sales, from additional residential customers, we believe you'll collect approximately $20,000. And then from apartments, just under $4,000 for metered sales. Commercial, we did see a slight decrease here, $400. And then we also adjust not only the metered sales, but also the fire protection. So at the bottom there, for additional residential customers, $1,629, and about $100 for apartments. So page 12 is where really every-
Do you have a question, actually?
Yes.
When you talk about fire protection from this, what is, what exactly is included in that? Are you talking about hydrants, are you talking about?
Yeah, so you have a public fire protection charge that everyone gets charged on their bill to be able to have that hydrant in place, and then if they did have a fire at their home, you'd be able to service that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Page 12, this is really the summary of the report. At the top, under revenue requirements, these are all the expenses that you need to support the water utility on an annual basis. So you have your expenses, your operation and maintenance expenses. Pro forma amount is $2,186,000. You have an outstanding revenue bond from 2015. Over the next five years, the debt service on that bond will average approximately $158,000. The debt service payback, this is in relation to that maintenance facility. So when the sewage works goes and issues the debt, the water utility is going to pay 50% of the annual debt service, plus the funding of a debt service reserve. Annually, that's going to be approximately $227,000. There is a payment and lieu tax back to the town, we've kept that at $19,000. And then for replacements and improvements, we have an allowance of $291,000. So overall, to support the water utility, you need to recover $2,883,000. The next four lines here, we deduct out some of your reoccurring revenues that don't necessarily get adjusted through your rates and charges. Those include your forfeited discounts, miscellaneous revenues, water tank rental income, and also test year interest income. So after accounting for those, you would need to recover $2,778,000 through your normal rates and charges. The next section's looking at, these are the annual revenues for 2022. So for normalized metered sales, we had $1,938,000. Normalized fire production, $122,000. We did do a water tracking factor that was only partially effective in 2022, and that was due to the increase in rates from Bloomington. So we anticipate you're going to collect an additional, approximately $37,000 from that increase for the water tracking factor. And then we also did the utility receipts tax reduction, and that was only partially effective in '22. So due to that reduction in rates, we would think you'd collect about $15,000 or less. So overall, we're showing that without any rate adjustment, we would think your revenues would come in at about $2,820,000. And then looking at the net annual revenue requirements, you needed $2,778,000. That'd be a shortfall of about $695,000. So taking that over your normalized revenues, you need an increase of about 33.4% or approximately $8 for an average residential user.
So would I be wrong to say that, you know, since we haven't had a rate increase in eight years, basically this just equates to like a 4.175% increase if we amortized it over those last-
Yeah.
-eight years? Yeah. Yeah, a dollar a year.
Yeah, it's really looking at about a dollar a year.
And this will get us to that 125% that we need for the bond security?
Yep. Yeah, once you were, if you were to adopt this, you wouldn't have issues with your bond coverage, you'd be much higher than the 125.
So it gets us flat, essentially. How does that, I guess, factor into the future? If we're just barely pulling flat, we know that currently inflation is still where it is.
Yeah, so unfortunately, going through the IURC, they're not going to allow you to do any kind of inflationary increase. One of the drawbacks of going through the commission is they really like you to run kind of a very lean utility, so they're not- Best practice would be to build in inflation because you know increases in payroll and materials are likely to cap in. It's just something that you can't factor into a rate case. Likely what you'd want to look at is potentially going to the commission more often, not waiting eight years, maybe doing it every two or three years. That way, you can recover some of those costs that you see every couple of years. But really, going through the IURC, you can't do that inflationary increase that you would like to do.
I do have a question. So part of this is on the building, right? So when that's built, then that money, we would have that, right?
Well, so you would go and issue likely a 20-year bond issue on the building, so you're going to pay for that over a 20-year period. So it, one thing you do have for the water utility is the revenue bonds for 2015. Those are falling off, I think, in the next 10 years or so. So that would give you flexibility down the road if you had other improvements you needed to do to kind of backfill the debt service that's falling off. So that is a good situation to be in, but for the maintenance facility, you'd have to issue a new bond, likely 20 years, and then paying that debt over the 20-year period.
Any other council questions?
And then just a little background on what steps would happen next. We would adopt a resolution in the bond ordinance. We would file, we're going to use a small utility filing with IURC. They allow you to do this if you have less than 8,000 customers. It's a little leaner process than going through a full rate case. And this is a good one to do that because you're not issuing debt with the water utility. So through that process, we would file, they have a standard form, we'd file our work papers. They have the OUCC that works with the IURC. They'll go through all the work papers, they'll go through your financials, they'll prepare their own report. They'll be, they'll come out and they'll say, we recommend this rate increase. And then after that happens, both sides kind of go back and forth and usually either reach a settlement or if you wanted to go to the full case, which isn't always the most fun, but a lot of times you'll reach a settlement, and that's the rate you'll formally adopt for the utility.
So am I understanding correctly that these numbers are based on the assumption that the bond will pass also?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, I know we've had discussions about the bond, and that's one thing we could potentially look at proposing in the filing as a true-up process. If you recall, when you issued the bonds in '15, we go and we do this rate case with assumptions on the bond. We don't know exactly what the interest rates are going to be or what you're going to get in the market. So whenever you go issue a bond, if, for example, if the water utility was issuing the bond, they'd make you do a true-up report, which essentially says, let's say you adopted the 33% rate increase, but the bond issue came in less than what we thought. Maybe it was cheaper, the interest rate was lower, you would be able to true up your rates down. So we're thinking, they may require that same process for if the sewer were to issue the debt, because they're not going to want the water to be over-recovering if the debt comes in less or the interest rates lower than what we're assuming.
Mike, do you have anything, you have anything you want to add, Mike?
No, I think Mitchell said it best, and I don't think he left anything out, so, questions?
Sandy, did you want to say something?
I just have a question about Dan. On page five, on page 16, it says capitalize labor for one employee. What does that mean when you say capitalized? Is that over a period of years?
It's going to be, you can see it's capitalized, we're going over the 10-year period there.
Okay, so that explains the amount. Okay, thank you.
So that's really going to go through, it's going to come out of your, like your depreciation fund, you'd be paying for that employee instead of out of your operating fund. It should just be running through your capital expenses.
Okay.
But you would still have, it's just kind of where the money lands in the different buckets. You still have the money to pay for that employee through your regular, your regular money coming in from your customers.
Jeff, does this make sense to you?
Absolutely.
All right, any public comment on this?
I would say, if anybody has any questions about particular expenses, especially the capital expenses, I'm free to give you the on-the-ground tour and explain in depth of why these were chosen as capitalized projects.
Also, thanks for pointing out that Mike, myself, Sandy, and Amber have sat in with these people on several occasions, and, you know, this is not something they just bring to the table. We supply all this information to them, and they turn it into a rate study. It's been, it's been a group effort trying to get, the water utility last year, I think, lost $100,000 from its ONM account because of these expenses that were unforeseen moving forward with fuel. Obviously, the price of material has skyrocketed, and the purchased water has went up. So just a little insight of what we've been doing behind the scenes.
Okay. Last call for any council comments. Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mitchell.
Okay. There are ordinances on the second reading, seeing none. Flood report, back to you, Mike.
I don't have anything to report. We're working on the easements, the permanent easements, the construction. We'll process them, get them out to the individual homeowners, and hopefully have a bid document prepared in the next six weeks. About right. And then put it out for bid. If I remember right, Christopher Burke, Andrew Miller said we probably, because of the permitting process and when we could start, we couldn't start before June anyway, so we're kind of right on track for hit that target date.
Right? Dan in Envision Elletsville, please.
Everyone should have received in their email today, I got mine, 1/24 this afternoon, something from Haley Rourke. And this is concerning the future land use. They sent, they sent, it's about 14 pages, the future land use plan, chapter four. So that's for everyone's review. It's just a draft, is all it is. They're looking for comments on it. It's going to be posted to the Envision Elletsville website also for public comment. And so just keep your eye out for that and read the email, and then also read the, it's only about 14 pages, I think.
Now, if we had questions on what some of the terms were, what they, like mixed use, who would we direct those to?
It says, please review the attachment and share any questions or comments directly with Haley or Denise.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, old business, UV lights for the wastewater treatment plant. If that's to you, Jeff.
So I think you have in your packet, you did give them the-
I gave them the price sheets.
Yeah. So months ago, when we visited this, we had put out the bid for new UV bulbs. We currently have the original UV system that was put in in 1997 at the wastewater plant, and we can't get parts. And you got, we had, we selected bids from two companies, Trojan, which is H.P. Thompson, and then from B.L. Anderson. They submitted a product from Wedco. I think B.L. Anderson at the time was about $8,000 or $9,000, somebody can do the math for me, cheaper. And we awarded the bids to them. Within that process, it was my understanding that either product would be a retrofit of what we currently have. And so recently, I was informed that if we go with Wedco, that we were going to need a, an engineering study done. And I requested a price from Westler Engineering, and that cost was going to be an additional $33,000. And they did a preliminary for B.L. Anderson and showed us, go ahead, be some construction done on our UV channel. So I reached back out to Trojan or H.P. Thompson, and they informed me that theirs is a true retrofit. In other words, we unbolt the one we have, unwire it, pull it out, and put in the new UV system as of 2023 standards. And there would be no engineering required and no retrofit or no modification, I should say, of the UV channel. I'd say the modification itself would require a bid process, an outside contractor coming in, adding some concrete, taking out some wiers, probably pushing $100,000 at least, I'm guessing. So that really pushed the B.L. Anderson bid way higher than the Trojan bid. And it's of my opinion that, and I've spoken to both, and their numbers are the same, but it's my opinion that we should be going with Trojan or H.P. Thompson's bid. And I've spoken to Rick, the chair, from President B.L. Anderson, and he understands why I feel this way. We, I do believe that we will be able to install this in-house, which will probably save quite a bit of money to the town. Questions, comments?
So how much you think it'd save?
I'm spitballing, I know for sure it's going to save $33,000, minus the $8,000 or $9,000 that the other piece of equipment. And then the modifications, I'm guessing, if you have to do the engineering, then you're going to have to do a bid, and somebody's going to bid on it, probably $150,000 at least. It's a no-brainer.
Darla, if we go down this road, do we need to have a motion to vacate the first one?
I think that's okay, you can do it as part of the same motion. So I was just thinking, if the council's inclined, someone could move to accept the bid by H.P. Thompson and vacate the earlier motion to accept the bid by B.L. Anderson for the UV lights.
So moved.
Second.
You referred to the first company as Anderson?
H.P. Thompson, and the bid that's being rejected is the one by B.L. Anderson. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I know we have a motion and a second on the table, but it didn't give a chance for any council comments or questions. Did you have any?
I think someone might mention the price of the second, of the new accepting bid. Is that-
I did not say that, no. $295,000.
All right, this is council action.
Well, I need to know who made the motion, I was too busy right now.
Oh, I did.
Because Darla said it so eloquently, I couldn't.
And who seconded?
I did.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Lance Walker?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. New business, request from the Indiana Department of Transportation for temporary use of a portion of the parking lot across from the Old Town Hall for restoration of the Main Street Bridge. Who has that?
Darla.
All right.
You received as part of your packet a letter from the Department of Transportation asking for a temporary easement on, on part of the parking lot that's across from the Old Town Hall so that they can do a bridge- bridge rehab project on State Road forty-six over Jack's Defeat Creek. And the cost is, or the price that the town will be paid is a thousand dollars for the temporary easement. So if you are inclined to accept that, the town council president can sign the paperwork and get that sent off to NDOT, and you should have in your packet an aerial photograph of GIS showing roughly where the temporary easement is going to be.
Did they say how long it would be for?
You know, Sandy, I'm sorry, I read the easement documents, and I don't recall there being any sort of time limit in there.
I'm guessing the only thing in question here is they're going to do this, whether we accept the thousand or say we want a different amount. Is that correct, Darla? We can't reject their offer to use the?
It's going to be hard to do so.
Right.
Because if you, if you don't accept the appraisal, then you'll just end up, the town will end up going to court and we'll be arguing over
Something temporary.
Right, how much a temporary easement is worth when it is three hundred and seventy-four square feet.
They're likely to just shut westbound forty-six.
Right.
And reroute, and it'd be just a giant pain.
I mean, they're gonna do the work no matter what.
There's a mailbox there at that, at that entrance to the parking lot, so.
Sounds like a post office problem.
Well, should we let them know that they might wanna move it? I mean, I don't, I don't know, is the dates in here when it'll happen to?
As the project is scheduled to be ready for contracts on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, subject to revision. So that sounds like that when it starts. I'm also worried about parking for the Masons and Caphenade to cook. But we really, this is a situation where, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they're saying, we, we need this, we're gonna take it. Here's a thousand dollars. If you don't take the thousand dollars, we're still gonna take it.
We'll just shut the roadway and put it in the roadway. This keeps the roadway open.
Right.
It's really not that much space, too. I mean, if you look at the map, it's two to three parking stalls at most.
So do you know if they're going to put a fence up or for their staging area or, because will that entrance be shut off there?
They probably just wanna park equipment.
That's what I was thinking, but.
I doubt they put fence up.
So people can still use that entrance to that parking lot, or you think they'll have it?
Oh, I'm sure they'll not block. Well, they, the entrance probably won't be blocked for some time.
It looks like Thurman's parking lot still is open.
Right.
And there is another drive on the other side, right?
There is.
On sale.
Okay. I think we should just maybe notify Carl that this is gonna happen. I don't know if he comes in that way or not, but I'm sure he'll see it anyway, but if anyone's down there, maybe talk to him, let him know what's going on.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree with you, Dan, giving him a heads up, though, wouldn't be bad. And the same with Amy Caphenade to cook and Gary Brimley probably from the Masons. All right, so do we need council action on this?
Did I hear you say September? Does this affect Fall Festival?
Downtown.
Yeah, it should.
Okay, I do.
But it's gonna be on sale in forty-six, so Fall Festival would be high school and that ends the sale.
Well, but they'll reroute traffic.
Oh.
So if that, if the Main Street parks messed up like that.
DMT is usually pretty good on a project like this, about working with us on things like that. We just have to make them aware of it.
We have enough time. Hopefully, we can get all this.
Keep an eye on microphone call.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That is a great pickup.
Is the food truck over by that time, too?
Last day will be September twenty-seventh.
So I'll have one week with it there. But that's assuming they start right on time on September thirtieth.
Correct.
First week, easily, they do set up, put up the signs, get line locates and this, that, and the other, so.
The festival will be over at that time, twenty-third, twenty?
Twenty.
We'll, we'll make sure it's coordinated. We'll, we'll make that.
We're really over the, it's gonna get done.
It's gonna, as I say, it's gonna get done whether we control it or.
Stay on the highway.
So do we have any more public comment on this? Council action? Do we need action on this, Darla, resolution to?
Yes, I think it would be appropriate for someone, if the council's inclined, to make a motion accepting the Department of Transportation's offer to purchase a temporary easement in the parking lot across from Old Town Hall for the sum of one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
There is another form. What's that last form, Lou?
Which one?
That very last, in the packet of paperwork you have to sign.
Oh, wow.
I think there was an easement acknowledgement.
There was? One that needs a notary?
The very, very last one.
The very last one. You did say that. Yes, NDOT line distribution, signature of claimant, handed to Darla to show.
Yeah, just make sure that we've got everything signed properly.
Yes, yes, this is what this.
So the motion will include the motion to authorize signature of the easement documents and the real estate claim voucher. Thank you.
So we need to amend the resolution?
I'm writing, what was, what were the two forms?
The easement document and the claim voucher for the one thousand dollars.
All right, William Ellis.
Well, do we need to do amendment because the original?
I think she just added two.
Okay, so that, that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
I think the records.
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, permission to submit a letter of interest to IU Health Foundation for a community impact investment fund grant.
I'll take that.
All right.
So there's a short window to apply for a grant with IU Health Foundation. It's, it's, well, just to be precise or concise, it's a, there's a two-hundred-million-dollar community impact investment fund. It was established in twenty eighteen. It's administered by the IU Health Foundation, and it supports nonprofit organizations to address key social, environmental factors that heavily affect people's health outcomes. These investments are made in support of IU's health goal to make Indiana one of the healthiest states in the nation. So we, I watched a seminar on this the other day, and we can, we can present a letter of interest, and it has to be done by May twelfth. And then if, if we're accepted after the letter of interest, then they walk you through the process of applying for a community grant. And my intent right now is to get the letter of interest in with your permission. And we, at any time, we can drop out if we decide our goals are too lofty or, or it's not the way that the board would wanna go. But these grants are for two hundred and fifty thousand to two million dollars, and they don't necessarily take a match. And there's, you know, there's a point system, I'm sure, that allows them to decide who should, should accept a grant like this. But after watching the, going through the, the seminar and what have you, I'm thinking that maybe we ought to submit a letter of interest. And I just need permission to go through that process. I've been working with Krista Curtis, and we're going to get Denise in a headlock. I did not get her in on the seminar. I think the day you is gone anyway.
To the ready meeting in Richland.
Right, right, right. And so I, I've got a few ideas of where we would, you know, why we would ask for some money. But for discussion right now, I'm thinking maybe a, a community center that could be built with these kind of funds and promote healthy activities for our children, whether, whenever, whether it's inclement weather or it takes an indoor gym, childcare, we could consider that, food distribution, health projects. They, they like partnering, so I've already talked to Marty Stevens from the Richland Township Trustees Office. They are currently housing FirstNet in a mobile unit, so we could expand on a program like that. And so I just think there's, you know, I just think there's an opportunity here. We've often talked about a community center and what it could do for the town, and there's probably another fifteen or twenty really good ideas what you could do with a community center. And I think it falls into what we are envision of, of what the park system will be like in the future. So I think the community center might fall under the park department's purview. So anyway, I know from at least two or three years ago, there was an interest that when any time we went for a grant or was even considering it, that we run it by the board first to make sure they're involved and, and we have your blessings, so. So the letter of interest will not adhere us to any project or, or, you know, it's just a letter of interest to get us going. And once we would be accepted, then we, you know, by then, we'll have a really well-written plan and project, that's what they'll expect from us anyway, put together. And it'll be for your review before we pass it on, and so, anyway, I just need to know what your thoughts are.
Counsel, council discussion?
Oh, I'd say we absolutely do it.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. You said this could be used for partnerships, would like partnership with a non-government agency like Pantry Two Seven Nine be something, is it possible?
That was brought up. I'm not sure, even a, a facility like a community center might be big enough for them. But we, we did talk about them, and, and we talked about how maybe we could help, so it's not out of the question that we'll go there. Marty also, he does food distribution for people in need, and so that's why, one of the reasons I talked to Marty about it. But yeah, we did talk about Pantry Two Seventy-Nine, how they might be involved. They're looking for a new home.
Yep.
Do you have ideas where you'd want to put this community center?
I do. Anybody listening? So, well, yeah, I guess I can throw it out there. The two spots that I think would be most appropriate, and they'll be a bit controversial for somebody, but we've never used this property right, right here. It, it, it might be perfect for it. At one point, since I've been here, I talked to the post office about relocating, and at one point, I, I was talking about a private investment that would come in, build the building, put, put the post office on the front and the community center on the back, and I'm just spitballing now. But that property just outside the town hall to the east here would, might be a good location. The other place that I think would be a better location would be where the current shelter house is, down on Park Street. And we would remove the shelter house, push back, back footprint to the edge, put in some parking in the front, and put the community center down, down on the trustees property. So that's when he would really become a partner, and I had talked to him about it. And so with the building of a new venue for music, that when we redo the Stewart Properties barn and the fact that during weather situations, when we were committed to a, a party or a, or a gathering or what have you, then a community center could work in the rain as well as, you know, as hot weather or what have you. So I know it's, to get rid of the shelter house, it was a stretch to think about it, but a community center might be well situated down there. There's a lot of things you could do with it, and it just seems like the right place for it, so. So anyway, that's what I'm thinking. It's, you know, I, I could use some help thinking.
And the Fall Festival did build that shelter with their funds, so just an FYI.
And when we would build the community center, if we build it on that property, it would be with the Fall Festival in mind.
Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to council action?
I'll make a motion for Mr. Farmer to submit a letter of interest to IU Health Foundation for a community impact investment fund grant.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, preliminary of four, anything not covered? Seeing no public comment. Supervisor comments? Start with you, Mike.
Speaking of gatherings, in, on April eighth next year, we're gonna have an eclipse, and there's probably gonna be anywhere from forty to a hundred thousand extra people in Moreau County.
Yep.
Hundred and forty thousand people. Yeah, I mean, there's no telling how many people's gonna be in Moreau County, and they all are not gonna fit into Bloomington. And I'm thinking, when you're watching a solar eclipse, you'll wanna be where it's open and green, and there's plenty of room. So we're gonna probably talk about it at the Chamber Commerce Meeting next week, and, two weeks from now. And I'm thinking that we might want to consider if we're going to do nothing or participate or maybe bring people into town, blah, 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 but there is going to be a solar eclipse. I'm almost positive. And I just, it's gonna be an event. I mean, people are gonna come from all over the country to be here because we are gonna have one of the longest eclipse, because we're in that seventy-mile path. So a lot of other towns are getting involved, T-shirts and stickers, and, you know, they're promoting people to come to their towns. So I just wanted to bring it up because I'm starting to think about that, too, and I could use some help thinking about that as well.
Well, again, Trevor, if you wanna chime in here, the state of Indiana has some unique projections that they're getting from other areas of the country where this has occurred before. You know, when I say keep going, keep going by multiples of five or six. You may have more and more and more people than you think in that path because we are the longest of any, the longer group. And for the council's kind of information, when we do budgets this year, we're gonna have to budget for fire and police to bring in extra people because when you talk to cities, this has happened out before.
Right.
This is not a one-day affair. This is a three or four-day affair, and this town may very well swell to forty or fifty thousand people, you know, in or around it. And they just simply can't manage that because everybody else in the county's gonna be tapped out on services as well. So they're gonna have to bring more folks in to help them out. When I heard the projections, too, I thought, there's no way. But when you actually think about it and look at it, and you look at some of the places in Illinois, they were camping in the road, they were camping in tree plots, they were camping anywhere else they could, and they just got overrun quickly. I mean, they were finding people on rooftops, they were finding people, the interstate just became gridlocked right about the time for this to occur. I would have never dreamed it, but, you know, when we talked to some people in the state, made some other phone calls, oh, it's absolutely true. Absolutely true. Even in major cities, they're just everywhere because this is such a unique event. You know, and while I think that thirty, forty thousand perspective is a little much, think of the outcome we have to have for public safety and other services for you, things like Hilli Hundred or the Fall Festival Parade, and that's what, another four, five thousand people at most? You kill a hundred, that's not even that. So even if you double the size of the town, they're. So even if you double the size of the town, they're gonna need help from outside and we're gonna have to budget to pay for it.
Yeah, projection I'm hearing Scott is one million within Monroe County alone, that one day.
Very possible, that's what I heard his way.
So...
They'll, they'll squirt out, they'll squirt out, tell it's on, and thank you for, I mean, even if we do not wanna encourage anybody to come here, doesn't sound like we're gonna need to. We'd be prepared for them, do some of our businesses wanna, um, try to make some money at that time, there's a lot of coordination that's gonna take place.
Bloomington hotels sold out, Martinsville Bedford all sold out for that weekend, so if we can get on board with this...
Right, yeah, to compo, compound it, it's like a national holiday cause it's, it's on a Monday, so people come in that weekend before, it's gonna be Party City.
I talked to one of the, you're right, I talked to one of the ones over in Illinois that had the same thing happen. Theirs was actually, I wanna say on Tuesday, but I may not be right, they had an entire weekend party, starting Friday afternoon because people came in to kinda stake out their camp sites and it just kept rolling and rolling and rolling.
What's the date?
Uh, it's April eighth and it'll be in the afternoon. I think the, the main event, it starts like at one twenty-eight, but the main event's right around three o'clock, two fifty-five or something like that and it lasts for...
Four minutes and...
Eight seconds.
And if you miss it, you're gonna have to wait another eight hundred years and I really don't wanna wait around that long.
No, uh, it, it'll happen again in nine, in twenty years, twenty forty-four happens again.
Really? I thought it was an eight hundred year...
Yeah, we had one about twenty years ago, yeah.
So, I'll be ninety-two then, so I probably will, I may retire by then.
Well, we had one a couple of years ago here.
Yeah, ours was on a full eclipse.
Right, full and no...
We were like ninety-five percent.
I'm, I'm pretty excited about it, but I just needed everybody else to tell me how excited I should be.
Be excited.
I, I drove to Kentucky for the last one and the, uh, Evansville, the, the, every lane of the interstate was dead still.
Right.
And, yeah, it was a hundred percent.
And it was wood.
But it didn't last for four minutes, I mean...
Yeah, I thought we were a hundred percent here, but just for a couple of minutes.
But, uh, we chose a small town to go to and there was a lot of activity, but it wasn't crazy, crazy busy. And we just drove down for the day, saw it and drove back that night, so it wasn't too bad.
But our businesses can really capitalize on this and make it up.
Yeah.
And we, we rented a little spot at a, uh, VFW and it was like ten or fifteen dollars, but, you know, they guaranteed they'd have food there and restroom, restrooms available, so that was what we needed.
Do we know, is the school corporation gonna do anything?
They're not talking to Jerry about it, they're looking into it, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought they were already closed those days, or arguing learning.
Yeah, I think it is.
Both school corporations.
If we lease off this land here for camping, we might be able to fill some budgets.
Well, if you think about it, by next year, we'll be, the trail will be started, the log cabin will be here, um, hopefully Stewart Park will be at least sixty or seventy percent complete and I don't know, but I'm just thinking anywhere there's a lot, a lot of parking, that's where people are gonna be, so the school will be covered. So anyway, we need to, we're gonna start getting ready for it.
Okay.
Just to, again, just make sure we budget for it, cause they're both gonna need outside help.
Right. All right, Jimmy?
I'm good, thank you.
Jeff?
I can confirm Mike will be retired by the second.
All right.
Have been a nursing home, Mike.
I take that as a challenge.
Kevin? Kip?
I just got a couple of things. Uh, if you happen to drive down Park Street, you'll notice that the final place that, larger place that's being assembled right now, so hopefully, I don't know, another week or so, maybe it'll be open to the public, I'm not sure, so, for weather permitting. Uh, I've been really busy here lately, I, I was able to get, uh, one of three pieces of equipment on Gov deals. We got the dump truck sold, uh, last Friday at four o'clock for nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, so I'm really pretty happy at the twenty-three-year-old dump truck. So, pretty good, it was a local person up around Martinsville bought it. Uh, the last thing is, is I, uh, inadvertently did not get this put on the agenda, so I guess you can yell at me if you want. I'm coming to you and asking to be able to purchase one last mower, uh, through, uh, it's through the via board purchase process, which is one-price deal, through Richard Small Engines for another Ferris mower. This is a joint purchase, I guess you'd say, between the parks department, the utilities and the street, we're gonna split it three ways. Uh, the total cost of the mower is fourteen-nine-thirty-nine, so it's gonna be roughly five thousand for each department. And I have the money budgeted in my local roads and streets developer's at the equipment line.
All right. Any council discussion on this? Any public comment? Any council action?
I move approval to let Kip buy into a Ferris mower from Richard Small Engines for how much?
Fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
What was it?
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that's all I have, thank you very much.
Denise?
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, I do wanna let you know I did get that signed, the community crossing.
Oh, good, thanks.
Mr. President, one other thing.
Yes.
So, um, just to be clear, cause I've been getting a lot of questions about this, um, the array of, um, playground equipment we currently have at the town hall is just the first installation.
Yep.
We do have more equipment to, uh, put up, swings, I don't know what you call it, merry-go-round, teeter totters and, um, and eventually a big rock and a sand area. And so we've just started up here, well, a lot of people saying, well, that's fine, but it's just one thing.
Yeah, they're saying it's just for little kids, but no, uh, this is just the first thing we've done.
Yes, yes, yes. And I've also had, it brought to my attention that most of this is for younger kids.
Yep.
So we're gonna start thinking about the next age level as we add on to the park and what we can do for them.
So we'll give them a bunch of cell phones?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, charging, charging stations, that's all you need.
Yes, exactly.
And maybe a coke dispenser, so, anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Sandy?
I don't have anything.
All right, anything from the council? I will plug the twenty-seventh at, I think it's eight AM, candidate forum, everybody from the Chamber of Commerce, everybody that's running this, uh, year, I, I think most have accepted, so it's great and you've got a, a lot of activity going on in Ellisville. And with that, no further business, we're adjourned.